Hello, everybody. Hey folks, we're gonna start, please.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
You can be our new sergeant at arms.
Thank you, sir.
It's 6:31, meeting was scheduled for 6:30. We've got an agenda, we've got a quorum. Our full membership is here. Thank you for being here. The, where's my little notice that says? Oh, Planning Board meetings are broadcast live and digitally recorded, and they can be played over again on the cable channel at a later date. So, tonight, I recognize that you're likely to be recorded either by voice or by video. And if you could, if you're going to speak, for instance, from the back row or something, we really can't pick you up very well. So if you could approach the table, it would be really helpful. We really have to think about all the people at home who want to see this. We have millions of fans. Plus, our commercials are not to be played, so...
As good as the Budweiser commercials, that's what we want to know.
Kendall occasionally does a magic trick.
Really?
So I'd like to call it the order. Tonight's meeting is kind of like a special meeting. It's not our regular monthly meeting. And we did it deliberately. We thought this was a topic, the topic being, where's our topic? Oh, Street or Road Petition Review. I'm a big fan of doing the public's business in public. So, we have this meeting scheduled tonight with one agenda item, the Street or Road Petition Review. It's out of sequence with our normal monthly meeting, but we thought it was worth giving you, the public, a chance to come and say what you want to say. And the only other thing I can say is the same thing I said last week. We're here as planning board. We deal with primarily zoning bylaws and some general bylaws, where we're designated as the ones to do that. We're not judges, we're not adjudicators of things. We can't resolve all things for all people. So we're going to stay focused on our job as planning board. However, because it's a public meeting, you're free to come to the microphone and say what you have to say, or want to say. And so it's a public meeting, it's a chance for you to speak to both your peers here and the folks at home. So, this issue may come to the town meeting. And sometimes it's hard to talk at the town meeting. It's hard to present your thoughts in that environment, so feel free to do so tonight. We won't address them all, but we're giving you the forum, okay? With that, does the board have any particular way they want to proceed? Or do we want to read the petition and then open it up to public discussion, reserving our discussion for the end?
That sounds agreeable.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay. Then, do I have the petition here?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like a moment to speak to Craig in particular.
Sure.
And the rest of the board. Craig, I have a little bit of...
And your name, ma'am?
My name is Deb Reed, and I live on Street or Road.
Okay.
I'm a little bit concerned...
I'm not sure we can hear you. If you want to remove all the chairs, I'm sorry. Let me get a chair.
So I'm a little bit concerned with you being on the board tonight, mostly because of your employment with the DPW. I feel that puts you in a rather awkward position, because the DPW has been very public about their feelings on this road takeover.
I think your hearing just dropped, ma'am.
Thank you. Yep, I got it, thanks.
You're welcome.
So, because of the fact that not only did last year the director or the superintendent try to remove the board's power for this very waiver that we're looking for by having that wording removed from the bylaws, so he's clearly has an issue with us having this road taken over. And you're being employed with him, I feel, is awkward for you, to be unbiased in the eyes of the public. And I feel that if you were to vote against us, you would seem unbiased. And if you were to vote for us, it could potentially be very difficult for you at your work. And so, therefore, I would like to ask for you to recuse yourself from this meeting.
Personally, I don't feel that way, because I'm not in charge at all down there. I'm a taxpayer in this town, so I kind of look at it from the taxpayer part of it. So I kind of, I feel like I could be very, you know, my thought and my decision will be my individual thought and decision.
Okay. And you don't think that will make it awkward for you? I know you're not, I know you're not the boss down there, but you have a boss that is against this project.
Yeah, well...
Do you feel that would make it difficult?
The way I also look at that is, I'm a taxpayer in this town, and, you know, long story short, I mean, he can't hold my decision here against me. I mean, there's ramifications for him if he did try that.
So you feel that you can be, you can listen to all that there is to be presented here and not come in with a thought beforehand, before you hear all of the evidence?
Yeah. It's nothing that, nothing from the director's point of view is going to influence my decision. Or, you know, a reaction from him to me about my decision.
Okay.
The person, I'm sorry, my name is Deborah Phillips, and I'm the attorney for the residents who filed petition. And I just, I kind of have the same observation. If you're being paid, you know, by the department that has taken a position against it, I think it might put you at risk. And you, did you have an opportunity to discuss conflict of interest with either town council or your own personal attorney on this issue? And would you like that opportunity? That's, I'm just putting that out there, because I have been doing city and town work for 30 years. Usually, I'm representing you folks. I've represented two cities and about 10 different towns over 30 years. And I'm in the position of giving advice to people that are in your seats and get these calls occasionally from people. So I just, you may want that opportunity, that's all I'm saying. I can't, I can't give you advice.
I mean, I stand by my comments that my thoughts are impartial and, you know, I don't think the director to... I'm a little confused if you think I will get reprimanded of some sort from the Highway Department, or if you're saying my judgment will be impartial. But I don't...
Excuse me, well, it's both. It's can you be impartial where you work for the gentleman who has taken not only a position against this, but tried to eliminate the provision that allows us to be here tonight, number one? And if you can, are you putting yourself, I mean, basically, are you between a rock and a hard place, no matter what you do?
No, I don't feel like that at all.
We all took conflict of interest training as part of our assumption of these positions. When we get elected, we take a number of training-type courses, and one of them is conflicts of interest. And part of that training is, clearly states that you're to avoid a conflict or even the appearance of a conflict. I think I'm quoting the law correctly. The law prohibits you from taking any type of official action that could create an appearance of impropriety or otherwise acting in a manner that could cause an impartial observer to believe that your actions are tainted with bias or favoritism. It goes on, of course, for many, many pages. But it's not just a direct conflict, it's even the appearance of a conflict under the law. So, my recommendation is that you step away from the table. And you've been certainly a good member of the board. This is not meant to cast any shadow on you, but it's the perception of the public that a town employee in the Highway Department dealing with a road issue at which his boss or his direct supervisor and perhaps others have taken a very publicly announced negative position on this. Is that fair?
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, from my perspective, absolutely. It's the gentleman's decision. We have no right to, not going to...
I think, I'm not sure I have any right to force someone, but I'm making a recommendation as clearly as I can.
We would have a right if this was, for example, a hearing on a special permit, which is the, it's not that, it's not a public hearing.
This is a public meeting.
Correct. Which is why we're not going to do that.
It's a public meeting in anticipation of a public vote.
Correct, correct.
How does the rest of the board feel?
Well, Craig, at my age and the positions that I've had, the political...
Oh, my lord, I'm sorry.
The political BS that you could be hit with down the road in your career, I would suggest that you excuse yourself. So you do not have to put yourself through that. Because I am willing to bet 95% that you are voting different than people higher in the DPW than you want you to, or would like you to, that you are going to pay for it.
Great, thank you.
Unfortunately, it's just the way it is.
Bill?
I kind of have to agree with someone can accuse you of a conflict and put harm on you. And I don't want to see that happen. And we do have Francois sitting right here. I think it would be the proper thing to do. I think Alice would know...
Bill, just a comment. Francois has nothing to do with this.
Oh, no, it just says we have an alternative member here.
No.
No.
Only applicants. Oh, no, that's great, I'm sorry.
Especially in front of which this is our case.
Oh.
It was mentioned by the other person as an example.
Thank you for correcting.
It triggered you. In this instance, this is simply a public meeting.
Yes, yes.
Knee jerk. I get it.
I guess my view is, the fact that you're on the DPW would not be a conflict if you didn't, you know, as long as you live on Street or Road or something. But I, and I'm new to this board, so I'm just being filled in about the fact that there was a history with your, the DPW supervisor opposing, accepting private roads. So, I mean, I try to give people sort of the benefit of the doubt. I'm not sure your boss will come back at you, but it does create a grounds for appeal for our decision. And then we'd have to start over again, and it might be, you know, that's that, it might come back to haunt us as a board, more than you as an employee, I think.
Before you make a decision, I'd like to inform the public about what we're talking about. Last year, in the special town meeting, there was a whole article on revising the bylaws. And the purposes, the purpose of, the stated purpose of revising the bylaw was to fix up the numbering system, correct spelling errors, correct inappropriate references, et cetera, and not make any substantive change to the meaning of the law. And when that occurred, and the committee formed, and they went through it with great detail and did, I think, a very good job. But there was one area that was brought forth. My understanding, it was from the chairman of that committee that did that review. She stated clearly that the DPW, I'm not sure what his title is, superintendent? The head of the DPW wanted to strike the section 2.1, which is the subject of tonight's discussion, wherein it states, I'll quote it, "Notwithstanding the above, the town meeting may accept in a pub, as a public way, a way that does not meet all of the conditions set forth above upon a recommendation by majority vote from the planning board to waive such conditions." So what he, what that article said, Article 23 of the special town meeting said, was if we strike that, we would not have the authority to do what we're doing, to consider what we're doing tonight. And so it's spot-on target. It's not some peripheral issue. It's the bullseye of the target. So that's, I just wanted to fill everybody in as to what we're talking about.
Tom, and that was also the same meeting at which they were voting on, the petitioners first came forward?
Yes, actually not the same meeting. That was a special town meeting. They then adjourned the special town meeting and go to the annual town meeting.
Right.
But yes, in the annual town meeting, there was a motion, Article 23, "The abutted residents of Hubbardston that the town vote to accept Street or Road as a public road," et cetera, and it goes on for a paragraph. That article, I believe, was, for some reason, disallowed. Didn't go to a vote, but a substitute vote was taken on what the sense of the meeting, and when I use the word "meeting," I mean the people at the meeting. What the sense of the meeting was, and I believe the sense of the meeting was to support such an article, although it was, that vote didn't result in any action being taken. That was just the sense of the meeting. I forget the score, but I think it was...
Only seven against, everybody else was...
120 to seven, or something like that.
179 people that signed up to vote, that came into the meeting, and only seven held their vote from, voted against.
Seven no's.
Seven no's.
Okay. Well, I don't, I don't have the numbers written down, but I know it was, it passed. So that, yes, does that fill in the background?
I was just trying to say, is there, there evidence that the DPW's objection, superintendent's objection to this provision was made knowing that the folks on Street or Road were trying to do this? Was there, maybe you don't know, but...
Oh, yeah, well, I can't judge the man's actions, but it was...
They were both in the public sphere at the same time.
Well, it was, it was actually, I don't know who can recommend making a bylaw change, but he's not a resident of the town. He's an employee of the town. So I don't know if that's a factor. But he nevertheless put forward his suggested change to be considered on the same day and location as the other ones considered. So, I'm sorry, I'm not sorry, please.
Connor Russell, Street or Road. I recall, I don't know if anyone else does, at that meeting you are speaking with, that the superintendent of the DPW actually spoke, and he expressed his desire that this should not be happening at the meeting.
What is this?
To entertain the fact that Street or Road becomes a town road. I believe he spoke. I don't, I'm just thinking about it, and I think he did speak. He was over on the side, the bleacher part. And the only way to really know that for sure is to go back and look at the filming of the meeting.
Well, I don't believe he's a resident of the town, but the moderator is free to allow the people that he, that he wants to speak. And so it's perfectly legitimate that he speaks.
Exactly. So that would be a little more proof that he was showing his feelings about Street or Road being taken over as a town road, is all I'm saying. If you're looking for something more concrete, we would have to go back to the video of the meeting.
All right, well, we'll just put that down as a recall. We don't, we all may remember it a little differently, but... Any other comments, questions, concern?
So, Deb, I do appreciate your concern. So after talking with my fellow board members, I am going to request that I recuse myself from this meeting.
Okay.
Okay. You don't have to leave the meeting.
I was back in the chair.
You have to leave the table. You can, you can participate in deliberations. You just cannot vote. No, he can't, no? Oh, I'm wrong. Take it back.
Helen, he really should leave the room.
And when you recuse yourself for a conflict, you're supposed to leave the room.
Okay.
Thank you.
I mean, that, that's from a case. It's a longstanding practice. I'm not, yes, I'm not your town council. I'm just telling you what the law is.
Okay.
The gentleman certainly do what he wants.
There's a couple options. John Nason volunteered that he would turn the TV on in the other room so that it's on the big screen, you can watch it in there. John, where'd he go?
He just went the other room.
He's working on it, okay.
You may need it anyway, if more people come.
Well, I think we'll all choose it.
So, if that's the case, I'm concerned, because I'm a taxpayer in this town, and my voice should also be heard on this subject. I don't see why I would be forced to leave a meeting, a public meeting.
Well, the guest just stated the law, or as she remembers it. Maybe I can find it in the...
Do you have the case annotations in your version?
I'm not sure I have case annotations.
Okay. We don't, we have what, I expect the... You're supposed to leave the room, and that's... And obviously, everybody who sits on a board is, almost everybody who sits on a board is a taxpayer in the town where they sit, so...
I'm sorry, I can't put my finger on it. But what I'd like to do is make another recommendation, that you do leave the room. I've seen it done before, where people actually have to leave the room. My goal tonight is to diligently follow the right process steps. Where it takes us, I don't know. But I don't want the outcome to be jeopardized by not following the right process steps. So I think this is part of the process steps, and I think we ought to do it right. I'm not interested in having a big conflict when this is all over.
Mr. Chairman, I think we should postpone this meeting and get a town council recommendation on this subject matter.
I second that.
I think it's a very unfortunate choice to postpone this meeting. We have a 45-day response, which is up in, I think, next Wednesday. I really cannot honestly consider postponing this meeting. Failing to accomplish what we've failed, we may fail to accomplish our mission. We may fail all these people and the town public in general. And I don't think that's a good idea. I think that's a terrible idea, and I cannot vote for it. I think, Craig, you've known you've been an employee for as long as you've been on this board, and I think you had an obligation to understand your position as whether you needed to be a special employee, or whether you need to file forms, or did you file a conflict of interest form?
Every year.
Okay. That doesn't qualify you to, my understanding is that doesn't qualify you to speak. It just makes sure that it's honestly declared, and thank you for doing that.
And thank you for recusing yourself. That's a very professional thing to do, so I do appreciate.
I appreciate, I mean, I'll just, if I can digress for 30 seconds, I appreciate the gentleman's position. I represent a board that had a chairman and spent an hour and a half with him and another official in the town convincing him that he needed to recuse himself for a matter. People feel that they're, they're not fulfilling their duty, and they're not doing the right thing if they don't stay, and they really believe that they can be objective. But as your chairman said, sometimes that's not enough. It can also be the appearance of having a conflict. And no matter which way you vote, someone's going to say, oh, it's because of. And so I appreciate where he's coming from.
I've been on boards here, ma'am, for like 33 years. I've attended a lot of boards. I've been in conflicts myself with zoning issues, and I've never had to leave the room.
I'll send you the case.
If I recruit myself, I've never been sued for that.
You're supposed to.
I think, I think, trying to do the right thing here is a fair board for everybody here for Street or Road. I don't think we should violate Craig's rights. He is a taxpayer. If he's recruited himself and sat back, he doesn't have an opinion on the vote. And I, I think that's fair, and that's my opinion. I don't think we have the right to kick him out of the room, because he is a taxpayer. And he did recruit himself, and I do agree with that, but...
I think what Attorney Phillips is trying to express is that there's actual case law that's, that's saying he should leave the room.
Because people, because not just a matter of opinion, it's a matter of case law.
It's because people don't, because people don't follow it doesn't mean that it isn't there. You found it?
The law generally prohibits you from taking an official action on matters which would foreseeably affect your own financial interests or the financial interests of your immediate family members, partners, employers, other than your, other than your municipality, those with whom you are negotiating or have an agreement, arrangement concerning prospective employment or organizations for which you serve as an officer, director, partner, or trustee. If one of these matters comes up for consideration at a board of health meeting, well, a board meeting, you must recuse yourself from any action on the matter and make sure that the minutes of the meeting reflect your recusal. We recommend that you leave the room during both the deliberation and the vote on the matter. The prohibition against acting on these matters is very broad. You may not participate as a board member in any way. So, it goes on and on and on.
So, Tom, did it just say deliberation and vote on the matter?
Yes.
So I can be in here up until you guys deliberate?
We're deliberating now.
Are you?
Well, you're taking public comment.
We're deliberating an issue.
Yeah.
Hmm? Are we? I think we're certainly discussing one.
You've got two lawyers saying you are deliberating. Just saying.
I don't know, Craig. I think, I think you have to, have to respect the process so that we don't end up with a big discussion about this very thing in three months. This is the first, this is, this Street or Road people, this is their second time around the track.
Guidelines, yeah. Which is based on an old case involving a school department. I can send it to you.
Even though she's on arguably the side of the petitioner. She says there's a case law, there has to be one.
Well, I mean, no offense, but I don't tell you.
You can't misrepresent it.
No, I, I appreciate that. But that's what that's based on, and I've been doing this for over 30 years. I'm just, I...
I'm glad to give you a copy of the law. I brought it tonight.
It would be...
I know you're an attorney, I've seen you before.
Against her, you know, it would be against our ethical law.
All right, hold, hold, one conversation, please. Let's, let's simply ask, Craig, would you please leave the room? This is not a reflection on your character or anything. It's just the potential for a conflict or the appearance of conflict. We're not trying to ostracize you. You've been a good member of the planning board, and I'm sure you will continue to be a good member of the planning board. But that's the recommendation.
I will leave just for the sake of, you guys don't have to stay here all day. And I feel like I'm being discriminated against. I just want to make that clear. I do have rights. I am a taxpayer. I should be able to stay and have my comments heard. But that being said, I will leave.
Thank you, Craig.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Craig. Sorry for putting you in an awkward position.
Tom, can you read the petition?
Yes, that's what I was going to... Sorry to do the paper stuff.
I have it without the signatures, but that's the petition. That's, that's...
That's fine, that's a point.
Right.
Petition to lay out Street or Road as a public way. We, residents of the town of Hubbardston, hereby petition the board of selectmen in the town of Hubbardston to lay out the vote, or, excuse me, to lay out the way, now known... We, residents of the town of Hoversden, hereby petition the Board of Selectmen in the town of Hoversden to lay out the vote, or, excuse me, to lay out the way, now known as Street or Road, as a public way pursuant to General Law, Chapter eighty-two, Paragraphs twenty-one through twenty-four. The dimensions and location of said proposed public way being set forth in a plan entitled, quote, "Layout Plan of Street or Road, Hoversden, Massachusetts," close quote, dated November thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, prepared by Zoc surveyors. Which plan is submitted here with and incorporated here with? I believe this petition has already, uh, been signed up, brought to the selectmen, the selectmen recognize the validity of the petition. They, um, by law, their process step is to announce their intention to lay it out and pass the petition and the accompanying documents to the planning board, and that's why we're here tonight, to consider the petition and respond to it. Or, the option is not respond to it, we don't have to do anything.
Correct.
If we twiddled our thumbs for forty-five days, it would automatically go back to the selectmen with a, I believe, a tacit approval, or enacted.
It's no, it's just no report.
No report. So we, we are acting tonight, um, rather than, excuse me, not acting. I gotta get a glass of water. Alice, is that, uh.
Thank you.
Respond properly to you. Five cents. I'm sorry, I left my wallet, I can't, can't reach my wallet.
It's on the card now.
You just need nothing.
You might. Tom, wanna bang it?
Oh, no, thank you. So, earlier we stated the best way to go would be to let the, uh, petitioner speak and, and then go to anybody else in the public sphere that wants to speak, and then, uh, stop the public participation, essentially stop it, I don't mean to stop it dead, but just, you know, hold it off while the board decides what to do, take it votes or whatever we do. So let's start.
Can I start, just to help frame the issue a little bit, I think you've gotten off to a great start, um, and I know that some people here know this, um, but for the benefit of those that don't, um, there is a statutory process to lay out streets and roads in cities and towns. It consists basically of three parts, the first part is the layout part, that has several subparts, that's where we are right now. The second piece is acceptance, and the third piece is acquiring the interests, the town acquiring the interests in the way. And that happens after acceptance, which would happen at town meeting. So this is a long process that has many pieces to it. We're here tonight, as your chairman said, because the selectmen received this petition, um, they found it to be in order, and they are required to refer it to the planning board for a report, or for the planning board to allow forty-five days to go by with no report. That's the state law. You also have a, a local bylaw that was referred to earlier, um, a general bylaw, Section two point two, two point one, um, and that's a, a local requirement that, uh, certain criteria has to be met for private ways to be made public. And, uh, the planning board may waive those, uh, conditions, um, if, if it sees fit to do so. That actually is not an unusual provision in towns' bylaws or city ordinances. It's also required if you wanted to discontinue a road in town, supposed to go through that same process. So that's where, where you get your authority from and why we're here tonight. The road at que, in question, as I understand it, is in fact the only private way in town that connects two public ways. All other private roads in town either dead-end or end perhaps at another private road. This is the only road that connects two public ways. It has been used by the public for many, many years, it has become a thoroughfare, it's a shortcut to Gardner. At some point in the recent past, the town apparently had indicated that it had concerns about the upkeep of private roads, and the Street or Road residents were, I'm sure, among other people that were informed, that the town was going to begin enforcing a bylaw where it could charge for doing the maintenance, which is also a common bylaw in, in many towns. Since this is a thoroughfare, and more people who don't live on it than live on it, probably drive on it on a weekly basis, that people living there feel that it isn't appropriate for them to be footing the bill for the public at large. It's one thing if, if it's only you and your, your residents, your guests, your delivery man, whatever, that comes to your house on a private road. But when I'm driving down it to get from here to here, or somebody else from another community is driving down to get from here to here, that's the public at large. So, they started working with the selectmen and, um, looked into what had to be done, they came to this board, um, at the end of, um, twenty seventeen, and in fact, this board did vote at that time to waive Section two point one, subject to this group doing the survey and, um, obtaining the easements for the town, which makes perfect sense.
This group being the Street or Road.
This board, that, that, this board voted that, asking this group to do this.
Yeah.
So they did, they have gone out and engaged a survey, um, to prepare a proposed road layout, and they filed the petition with the board that was read a few minutes ago, the Board of Selectmen. Um, on the easements, that can't be done until the third piece, the acquisition piece, that's when the town actually acquires, um, its rights in the way. And, but it is the stated intention of everybody that I've been involved with in that signed the petition, to gift the appropriate easements to the town. The details of which will be worked out, obviously, with the town council, who would be looking out for the best interests of the town. So, the question for tonight is, why should you make a favorable report back to the Board of Selectmen? And I guess the first thing that I want to point out is, obviously, the board understood the situation at the end of twenty seventeen, and I realize some board members may be different, but in prior years, from seventy-four to oh-five, this board has endorsed at least seven A and R plans, and on Street or Road. Street or Road is clearly not a public way, it's not a way maintained by the town that can be certified by the town clerk in that fashion. It is not a way that shows on a previously approved subdivision plan. So, the planning board must have approved it under the third leg of those choices, which is the planning board found that it had sufficient with suitable grades and adequate construction to allow the division without going through the subdivision process. So, on that point, I would say the planning board's positive recommendation that the road be laid out as a public way is really consistent with the history of how this board has treated, um, the road and has treated the property owners on that road, um, and it really isn't a stretch.
But this, this is history.
Yes.
This is not.
Yes, correct.
This is not this board.
Correct, but it is the planning board of this town has looked upon the road this way, and as you also probably know, um, once you endorse a plan under eighty-one P, it is conclusive on all parties. That is in eighty-one P, and I, I'm, I'm, I'm probably not telling you anything that you don't already know. So, it gives a good indication of, of historically how this board has treated, as I said, this road, and, um, it really wouldn't be a stretch to make a positive recommendation now, seeing as you seemed inclined to do, not maybe all the same membership, but this board seemed inclined to do that in twenty seventeen, if the residents actually followed through and went through the layout process, um, under the statute. Which is why that article was, was probably ruled out of order at town meeting in some fashion, either by town council or the moderator, um, because all the, um, the preconditions to bring an acceptance to town meeting had not been met, and to have it turned into a vote of the sense of the meeting was, was the most logical and appropriate thing to do at that time. So that's just by way of, of explaining that piece. I have more to say, I have, I did watch the video of your last, uh, meeting where this road came up, and I have, um, answers to some questions that were raised then, but, um, maybe I'm the one that needs a sip of water now, and Deb can give you more about the reasons why this, it's important to lay this road out as a public way.
All right, let's just stop, you guys got any questions? Take a deep breath and we begin the next chapter, or?
Can I just ask one clarification point? I, I've also gone back and looked at a bit of the history, there was a, a, sort of a major subdivision plan laid out on this road in eighty-six.
Correct, it was eighty-six.
Um, now you say there have been seven more, where, where were those land divisions on this road, roughly?
I'll give them all to you. I, I don't know, because I don't live there.
Yeah.
But, um, that's one of the, that was never built, the road was never built, according to the subdivision specs, so.
It was never approved.
Huh?
It was never approved.
Yeah, so these, oh.
Sorry.
You'll have to give them back, or we'll have to send them to you, but those are my copies, and I highlighted the years that the planning board endorsed them, approval not required.
What, I guess in specifically, one of my questions is, is the backland, are there other roads that feed into Street or Road between the two roads that connects between Grimes and this one on the other end?
No.
Because there were easements reserved for roads.
Sure, but there's nothing on the ground.
But, so none of these other divisions affected back lots that were trying to.
Well, there are no other, there's no other roads off those.
Okay.
No other roads have been constructed, either through a process or just as, either through an approval process or just because somebody felt like putting a path in the woods.
So, so what has happened to the rest of the Street or Road Realty Trust property?
I have no idea.
So Realty, the, the, the original Realty Trust, um, I guess you could say they essentially went bankrupt.
The guy went bankrupt and disappeared.
And he walked away from the project.
He was trying to prove all of this. Um, could I answer a clarifying question? You have a roll of plans there, there are the plans that were, I believe there are the plans that were submitted to the selectmen.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, right here.
I've looked at them, and I don't see it, but would you tell me if there are any branch roads off of those, off Street or Road?
This would actually be a better one, too, when they suggested it's bigger and it's.
Okay.
And my.
Easier to read. And it has all the lots.
Yeah, well, it, it has the frontage, the front. Sorry. This, this would be a good one to look at.
If I could finish my question. I'm asking, if those, the plans submitted to the selectmen are then flowing to us, does it show any branch roads? That's one question. Second question is, um, is there any road being discussed tonight other than Street or Road? Is there anything coming off of this that is part of this deal?
There are no other roads.
Nothing, it's Street or Road and Street or Road only. Okay.
Well, only within the four corners of the petition could be, could be discussed tonight, and tonight is Street or Road.
I know, but. But allusions were made to branches coming off of Street or Road.
Oh, I think the.
And I want to make sure there are none considered.
Yeah, I think the board member had a legitimate question.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to nail it.
Yeah.
That came in in eighty-six, there's only one of appeals, and he lost his appeal, and it never transpired, but he applied for it all.
So that plan is void?
Correct. It's in the file, but it's, nothing ever happened with it.
Would it be on in the registry?
I couldn't tell you.
It is recorded, that's how we have it.
And is it recorded as void?
No. Can you read the?
If he lost his appeal. If he lost his appeal, doesn't it, uh, fail to get registered in the registry, please?
I don't know what was appealed, and yes, you're right.
Which one were you?
He was screaming for a variance.
Someone. That's, that one, yeah.
Were you on the, uh, what, were you in the third grade?
Subdivision is not required.
Right, it says approval not required, I don't know why, I'm just telling you that's what.
So Alice, does yours not?
It was an A and R, and I don't know why.
Does it carry a booking page?
Yeah.
All right, then Deb, you got a homework assignment.
Right here. Five five nine plan, no, this is recorded at five five nine forty-one.
That'd be proud of it.
In August of eighty-six.
But if it, if its appeal failed, doesn't it?
It, it shouldn't have.
Shouldn't be there.
Shouldn't be there.
Shouldn't be there.
No.
That's a homework assignment for you folks, because if it shouldn't be there, we don't want it there.
We don't want it to happen down the road someday, maybe.
Yeah, I don't want this thing to come alive.
It says, it says subdivision control law is not required.
Right.
So, I don't understand the question.
I don't either, this is approved as an A and R.
We have the House historian.
Good.
Vincent Ritchie, please.
As a point of information, if, if there was a subdivision approved in nineteen eighty-six, this law's all zoning protection.
Because of the passing of the zoning, uh, bylaw?
No, because they only have eight years.
Eight years.
They haven't built out.
Okay, so it's void for another reason, it's expired.
Correct, they have zoning protection that they have to initiate in order to, to fulfill their approvals, and if they, if they don't do it within eight years, then they lose their zoning protection, so that subdivision is just now void.
The lots can't be built upon as designed necessarily, because if the, your zoning changed, they needed to start the construction, and they didn't.
I'm just trying to close off any side concerns.
Well, they, they are all built out, they are all built on.
If I can.
Every one of those lots.
No.
My, my house is on one of them.
Probably because it was, this was approved as, all we have brought forward for, to make this point, is A and R plans, because those plans are plans that don't require subdivision approval, and were granted ninety-nine, and the gentleman is here who was the chairman, he may know better, but the only way I can see that they would have been granted is under the third prong of the definition of, um, the exception for subdivision, which is a way that the planning board found was adequate, because it doesn't meet the other two.
That's actually endorsed on this plan, so I was assuming it was built.
What's the title of that plan, please?
That, it's a night, it's called Plan of Lots Surveyed for Street or Road, surveyed for Street or Road Realty Trust, Hoversden.
Got it.
Okay, so I'm assuming these were built, my question was actually that there are access strips for future roads.
These are all built houses.
So my question was, but which you couldn't put, they're only tw, it looks like they're only twenty-five feet wide, which would not give you enough width, because you wouldn't have the right of way, so.
And they're all homes built on those. There's twenty-five homes on Street or Road, and all those lots.
Right. Right, but there's also these two access strips to the backland.
Right.
So my question was originally, what, are there any plans for, were, were they ever built out during those eight years while it was still good? Is there any, or are there any other access roads that come into this road, because it changes.
Well, those are.
How you might vote if you know there's another cul-de-sac that's gonna be tied in and add another.
Those are not access roads, they are only paper streets, and they are now parts of other, of people's properties, like they're probably somebody's sideyard or backyard, or their septic system could even be on it today.
Okay, so you need to be actually sold to a butters.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
I, I don't think so, right?
They're homeowners now, they, they, and back in those days, there was nothing there, and the gentleman that did this was trying to sell a cul-de-sac, and he applied for it, and he couldn't do it.
That's what got rejected.
That's what got rejected, that makes sense, that makes sense.
Okay.
That was back in eighty-six, and then he came to the zoning board of appeals, asking for a variance.
Okay, that's exactly what I wanted to know.
And you're right, they can't be built, because they're not fifty feet wide.
Not now, they're not built.
Why would they? In the eighties, they should have been fifty feet.
They weren't fifty feet wide, the drawing was misread, it's the radius of the curve that's twenty-five feet.
Ah. Okay.
But that's okay. All right, I'm, Mike, Ben?
Again, uh, as a point of information, Street or Road was a way in existence before the subdivision, before the, um, zoning bylaws were in place, therefore, A and R plans could be endorsed. Therefore, A N R plans could be endorsed along that way.
At that time.
Even today. As long as it was a way in existence before zoning came into place, July was seventy-eight, then it has the opportunity for A N R to build it, that's why all the lots have had that consent.
Yes?
Yeah, it was actually described as a carway. I don't believe it's described as a road. As wide as a car, it was used for to access wheel wells for the residents of South Garden.
Well, the subject plan, I don't know what it was called before or after this plan, but on the subject plan, it says Streeter Road. I don't know, doesn't say anything other than that. But anyway, my question then is answered, there are no side branches or anything coming off of here, so let's move on. I believe the ball was over to you, Deb.
Did you want to tell more about the history of the road?
I can tell some more about the history of the road. I know some of the board members are very familiar with the history of the road. The fact that it's, you know, been in existence for about a hundred and twenty years. It's certainly changed over the years, as it's been used more and more by the motoring public. The fact is that there are twenty-five homes and twenty-six home or landowners, including the Lovewood Pond Association. And we pay about a hundred and five thousand, well, that was last year's figure, so we pay a little bit more this year. Generally speaking, the D P W uses two percent of their budget for taking care of roads. And certainly two percent of that hundred and five thousand dollars is going to well cover any small expense that may happen in terms of grading Streeter Road, which I do have figures for it. It costs about seventy-five dollars a rate an hour for the town to come and grade the road, including a grader and an operator. Takes them about four to six hours to do that, so it's well under eight hundred dollars for them to come and grade the road.
Could I ask a question? The hundred and something thousand dollars, what is that?
That's our tax base for the twenty-five homes.
Real estate tax?
Yes, real estate taxes.
Excise tax for cars or any of that stuff, just real estate?
Just real estate taxes, yep.
So are you looking for the town to pave this road or grade this road, or what are you looking for?
That's, that's why we're actually here, Alice, is so that that need to upgrade the road is waived by the planning board. Because it's been a dirt road, a gravel road for its entire existence, and we'd like it to stay that way. As was mentioned before, it's traveled so heavily already by the public that if we were to pave that road, it would be an absolute racetrack. And that would be nothing that any of us would like to have happen. We'd like it to stay.
So you're just looking for basic maintenance of this road?
Basic, and it happened for decades before, but you know, because of the bylaws and the state laws, we recognize why it happened. But historically, it had been, two thousand and two was the last time.
Right of that, the town graded it twice a year, and they plowed it with their own trucks.
Who plowed it?
The town.
The town.
With the town truck?
Correct, and they graded it twice a year, the same as they do over here. That was, that's been done for many years. Wait, Tom?
I'm sorry, I was making a note.
I'm sorry.
There was bond money that the town took when that developer left, because they were supposed to pave that section. Once that bond money was used up by the town, the residents were responsible for the upgrade of the road. So that was rare, as the town came in, but after that, the money was all used up.
Well, bond money is town money, just like tax money.
But it was, it was the state law that was, you know, brought into play and the town laws that.
He lost his bond. Can I address the, the member's question though about what the residents want? The residents want the town to take over the road. The residents are not trying to dictate how the town will maintain it in the future. And they would have the same rights and whatever as anybody else living on any other townway, to call and complain about a pothole or whatever. They're not asking, they're not coming in with a construction plan or anything like that. They're not asking the town to do any specific activity or work on this road. They're asking that the road be laid out as a public way. And then it's up to the town officials to do what is appropriate to keep that road safe for the travel that occurs on it. The same as they do every other town road. So it's all, the judgment is, is in, in their hands at that point.
Okay, now I appreciate that clarification, because it is different.
Yes.
What you're asking for would affect our vote, I think, perhaps. Because if we're thinking, you're thinking the full right of way, the shoulder, the buildout, you know, it's a very large amount of money.
Yes.
Okay, so I do appreciate that clarification.
And then just a couple other little points of history is that there is a fire hydrant in the pond that's on Streeter Road, so it certainly needs to be accessed by the fire department. That would cover not just Streeter Road, but Grimes Road, as well as any other area that they might need to get to, maybe Old Westminster Road. And right at, at this point in time, the school buses are also using Streeter Road as a turnaround. They're parking on Streeter Road and they use it to turn their buses around on, and even Westminster is doing that to Streeter Road. So it's being well-used by the public. I think those are some pretty, pretty important basics for, for you all.
Well, if, if we could ask you to just press pause for a minute. I'm going to sweep the room and go from this end to that end and see if anybody else has any comments or whatever you want to say.
Everybody sign in.
Oh, yeah, did we get all your names on the, on the signage sheets, if not?
Signage is over there.
Maybe we want to pass that around a little bit, if anybody missed it.
Yes.
Thank you for remembering that.
I'll give up my chair if anybody wants to.
I guess I could just make one other small point, which is, should the road become public? Then, of course, the town is eligible for chapter ninety funds.
Yes.
And so one of the gentlemen who live on our street, actually, I don't think you can make it here tonight. He works for the D P W in Holden. And so he was able to go onto the D P W website and give us an approximate figure of what chapter ninety funds would be, based on the size of the road. It's a eighth of a mile long, so it would be about thirty-two hundred dollars. Three thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars was the figure from last year, probably, it changes, you know, a little bit from year to year, so I don't have an exact updated figure. But that, again, is well over and above what would be spent doing a little bit of maintenance on an eight tenths of a mile road.
Chapter ninety is an allocation of state funds to mileage of road?
Exactly.
And what was that number again?
Three thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars was last year's figure.
How much would Godrail cost at the Causeway?
Um, I don't.
That's a liability.
It is. Causeway.
There's a lot of waterways along Old Westminster and Grimes that don't have Godrail either.
Yep.
Can I give one more question?
Sure.
I feel like I'm monopolizing this. When you say the butters would convey the necessary easements or however that's going to be, that would include the full fifty feet, right, the right of way amounts as well as the road amounts?
They have to be by law, sure.
Well, let's let the answer come out.
That would be something that town council and our council would be working out in the language of the easements.
It's not fifty feet for the whole width of the road.
Is it from the center of the road?
I mean, the whole length of the road.
It's from the center of the road.
No.
Let's let, let's let one person answer.
It's not fifty feet wide the entire length. And part of the process this evening is to hear concerns about that. And we have the opportunity between now and the time that the selectmen vote, their next vote, which is the last step in this process before it would go to town meeting. We have the opportunity to make changes to the plan. And I have an email from your town council to that effect, that, that she agreed that that was an appropriate thing. It's the layout that the selectmen vote on. As somebody, you don't have to get into the weeds of width and the easements and the right of way here as a planning board for purposes of making your decision. Certainly, the proponents and I, to carry back to the surveyor, would like to hear those concerns, because we have the opportunity to address them.
I apologize, I do see.
Yeah.
Some places it's fifty and it narrows down to as little as twenty-three.
And that could change again if, I mean, people here that live on the road, every single person that owns or abuts on that road, should have had, and they certainly should tonight, have an opportunity to look at it and say, well, I don't think that's right. There's a stone wall there, there's no way it can be this wide here or something that, that we don't know about. And that, that is sort of a secondary part of this process.
But you think, it could be modified without your having to come back here.
Come back here, correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So we're, we're not, we're not approving or in any way freezing this plan.
Correct.
We, we are waiving requirements for the ultimate road.
Yes.
That's what I thought we were doing, because that's what we did last year.
Yes. And making a report on whether you think it should be accepted if you feel that you want to make that report.
All right, so I'm going to go back to my methodology, and I'm left-handed. So we're going to go sweep, sweep, sweep until people raise your hands for comments, and you're free to come close enough to the microphone to be heard and make public comments. And we'll go all the way across the room, no one will be excluded.
I'm, I'm all set.
Prince, why didn't catch your eye? Any comment?
I'm not here as a Streeter Road member.
Well, you don't have to be to talk. I'm not on Streeter Road, I'm doing a lot of talking.
How's it?
Yes.
Michelle Alboni, number twenty-nine, Streeter Road. This is the emotional side of this, and I think it's been incorporated into all the legalese and comments. But I've lived on Streeter Road for, I guess, twenty-three years. And it's been so hard to live there and know that we have responsibility for maintaining a safe area in front of our homes for our neighbors, but we have no control over who drives on it. We're on, we're not allowed to shut it down to the public. People have tried that, and we've talked about doing it. We want to leave the road open, we want to, I think, I speak for everyone, I say we want to leave the road kind of like it is. But it's so hard to know that I'm assessed property taxes as though I live on a public way and even though I live on a private way. And we've been paying those taxes for twenty-three years. And you guys mostly took care of us and continue to try to do so in different ways, and we're grateful. But I, I can't, it's so, we're all being kind of held hostage. And I think that if, I'm a limited government person, but this is what government is for. It's to help people in situations like this, where we're not asking for much, we just need your help, because coordinating that maintenance, deciding how to maintain the road is beyond all of us now. I mean, individually, we're all calling trucks now and then to fill in a hole so that somebody's kid doesn't, on a dirt bike or something, doesn't hurt themselves, I mean, and we're all doing our best. But we really need your help in this. I don't think we're asking for much. We don't want anybody's reality to change, including people who have concerns about this project. But we really need your help, because this isn't sustainable for us. I mean, if, it, you know, this is why government exists, to try to do collectively in one place what twenty-five people have a hard time doing individually. And I think it's been demonstrated, it doesn't cost a lot, for many, many years you guys did it. And on the town budgets, they would say how much it costs, it was just, it was a nominal amount of money. But when we all do it individually, it's a lot of money. And it's above my head, I don't know who to call for these things. So please take that into consideration and know the spirit, I think, in which most of us are operating. We have really smart people that know all the legal stuff, but I just wanted to speak as a resident. We really do need your help.
Thank you. Back row there? John, do you live on Streeter Road?
For once, many, many years, no. I don't, but I, I'm a tenant of my son's residence.
On Streeter Road?
I'm concerned, I'm not a teenager anymore, and I may need an ambulance. And, you know, suppose it snows, now we've, we've been very lucky. That when the D P W did come in there, they were there for a very short time and did an excellent job. So we're not disparaging anybody at the D P W, they do a great job on our road. But we live on a dirt road. And the next few days, we're going to have warm weather, and that's going to turn into a quiet month. And that's when the problems start. Better get an ambulance in there or a fire truck, that's a problem.
Who, who plowed it this time?
They, the town hires, has a private contractor that does that.
So the town?
Yes.
Okay.
They do a great job, too.
Yes, this, this is, our earlier discussion with Craig has nothing to do with disparaging the D P W. He, in fact, has taken courses on road maintenance and he's a very good contributor. In the other room there?
I'm Sharon Begley, just to not ask you my husband. The unregistered Z O C.
You're welcome to come to the table so we can be sure and hear what you say, if you wish.
No, I'll just stand up. Unregistered Z O C plan of November thirtieth.
You're not going to be heard by the folks at home.
Dating a long outpropping line is incorrect. We did an extensive title search, and we came to present our information to the planning board last Wednesday. And we own up to the traveled way, and thus, according to Massachusetts general laws, we own up to the middle of the way. This was confirmed by town council, I'd say about, I think, two thousand thirteen. And the town manager wrote a letter to all the residents of Streeter Road that lived up there at that time, informing them not that what we own to and not to go by the Z O C two thousand and three plan, where he entered into private property to create a new road line. And at this time, we are not gifting our property to the town or the residents.
Anything else?
I have a little something about that.
Oh, give me a second.
Yep.
You're still on pause.
I finished the round. Yep.
Senator Caseley last week, and he gave you the title search that we, that I hope everybody read.
We have a.
Showed you the registered survey, and we're gonna isolate it. And that's where the disagreement is, we're not in disagreement with the rest of the world, just we're not buying it. And that's where the disagreement comes in.
Okay, yes, we received your document, in fact, prior to last week's meeting. And it's a twenty-something page document that I would best describe as the title search results. And I hope we've all read it. Anything else?
Did the board come up with any answers after reading that title search? Did you look at it really carefully?
Well, I read it, I can't speak for everyone. Yes, I've read it.
I read it too. I can't, I can't actually hear you, I'm a little hard of hearing. But I did read it, I think that it does show, it outlines where the road, the present tarmac is. Are you disputing, or not tarmac, the traveled, the traveled way part of the road? You're not, is what you're concerned about, having the buildout? Or are you concerned with, or that the?
What we're concerned about is what the Z O C plan shows. He shows that it's not, our land does not go to the traveled way, but I, title search, and it does show it going through the traveled way. That's what we're concerned about.
We can fix that.
And Z O C is issued to everybody.
I don't think anybody at home can hear you.
I think you're gonna.
Come on, nothing, if you wouldn't mind, I want, I want your expression, expression of your thoughts to be well understood.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, we can correct that. I'm so grateful that these people sent us that material, and I wanted to thank Mrs. Begley, and I didn't have a chance to previously. But she did send me a letter and provided me with that information, and I have read this before it was presented to the planning board. So that is something we can correct.
Maybe we'll come around the table.
That's what we wanted to make known, that's why we are here tonight, to make this known to everybody. That we don't disagree with the rest of the plan, but we do disagree with what's in front of our land. That we don't disagree with the rest of the plan, but we do disagree with it, what's in front of our land.
I understand.
We have a, we have a title search that has been done. We also have a registered plan that has been done prior to this plan. This plan is not registered, is that correct?
No, it can't be yet.
That's correct.
It can't be yet.
Our plan is registered.
No, you're absolutely right.
Two thousand and three plan is not registered.
Okay.
But can you address it?
I, I would like, I would like
Yes, we can.
I would like you to present rather than debate.
Well, I think I, I think I just presented everything I wanted to say.
Okay, well, it, it may have been, uh, garbled by two or three people speaking at the same time. If you're just speaking to the microphone and say what you wanna say.
Do you want me to repeat what I just said?
Yes, please.
Okay, we are in disagreement with the, the present ZO plan that has been presented to this board. Only in the part that abuts our land, not the rest of the road, but the part that abuts our land. That's what we're in disagreement with. We have a title search to prove this disagreement. We have a, a registered survey plan to prove this disagreement. And that's all I have to say.
Okay.
And I want everybody to realize that, that that's the disagreement we have.
And, and town council reviewed it, um, back in two thousand thirteen or fourteen. And agrees that we do own to the traveled way, that, and that's to the middle of the way.
Okay.
Okay, simple.
I just wanted it to be well heard and well understood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving over, uh, then, gentleman next to you, sorry, I forget your name already. Okay, then, uh, we're all the way around and, um,
Tom?
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped you.
Can we talk?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. My biggest question, folks, since there's a disagreement here, um, before this goes any further, is this something that can be worked out?
Absolutely.
Between the Bagleys and
Absolutely.
Where whatever has to be moved or changed or whatever has to be worked out, is that agreeable or doable?
Yes, it is. We didn't wanna do it before tonight because there are a whole bunch of other people who have property rights on the road as well. And we didn't know, and I did discuss this with town council less than a month ago. We didn't know if somebody else, other than the people that had put forth their information, might have another discrepancy. And you can't keep going back to the surveyor, move this, move that, move this, move it, twenty-five times. It makes no sense. So, we wanted to gather everything, um, together and, um, make sure that we were on the same page.
Two things. I, I don't think, um, We're going to be looking at this plan, which is a signed, uh, stamped civil engineers' plan. And whatever plans the Bagleys have in their, their, um, uh, Title search document. And sit here tonight and redraw some lines and
Correct.
Figure that out.
Right.
Correct.
There's an expression, you know, settling things on the courthouse steps. Is there some way that, uh, this can be resolved amongst yourselves? In the hopes that this plan, either accepted or rejected by this board tonight, could be revised, as you say, prior to the select board meeting. So that, uh, the greater good is accomplished.
Absolutely.
I would encourage it, but I can't really facilitate it. We can't sit here tonight and redraw lines on, on registered plans. That's not our job.
Correct.
But, um,
But I do appreciate the people who have the information pointing it out so that we can go back to the people that were engaged by the group and ask that that be done.
All right. Have you started that process?
No, because we don't know if anybody else
Okay.
Might have had an issue and tonight is a forum in which people could bring that up.
Does anyone else have a situation like, uh, Sharon Begley, where you're, you've reviewed this plan, which has been available to the public now for almost a month, I guess. And has a conflict similar in nature to the boundary lines or whatever we're talking about here.
It can be any conflict or any question
All right.
That we could resolve.
Are, are we down to one?
Can I just ask a question with this?
No.
Seems to me, the gist of their issue is that they own to the middle of the road. And there's another plan on record that would suggest that there was a strip between the northern edge of the road and their land, which they're discrediting because it was, uh, there were two deeds. I had to, if you read.
Did you read the title?
I did.
Yeah, okay.
I did. So, if, so my question is, if they acknowledge that as written here, you folks own to the middle of the road as drawn, would that solve this problem? Not in terms of the takings, not in terms of you're dedicating any land beyond what's already in the way. But is that the gist of the issue here?
No, the issues are that, um, at this time, our time and resources are going to a flooding issue that we have on our property. And once that gets resolved, we're gonna move on. We will move on with this, this street problem. But, um, I wanna get my lawyer, once it's time, into this issue here to, um, represent us with the road. And we can't do that right now.
Is the flooding being caused by the road?
It's a big issue, so I don't wanna get into it right now.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
But I, I, I hear you loud and clear.
And I also wanna say too about, um, laying out a way, uh, there's no buffer zone where, um, utilities and drainage and with the plowing in the snow, go, I, I spent a lot of money on, um, this piece of land. So, I have concerns there too. But when the time comes up, we are willing to dis, discuss it.
Thank you.
Very good, very good. It's very good to hear that. Because in, in a very real sense, the clock is running. We have our forty-five day thing due next week and then the select board acts and then there's an article and then there's a town vote. And so, the clock is running and I can, while I can't resolve it, I, I just really want you people to put your heads together and resolve this. There's twenty-five or twenty-six families involved in this. And, um, Harverson really doesn't have anything but families. We don't have any big factories and, you know, utility projects and things that, uh, go beyond that. So, we're a community of families and I would hope that, uh, all you families can put your heads together and resolve it. Yes.
I would like to just say something. I'm Donna Russell. I live at twenty. I think the fact that you're asking twenty-five families to try to resolve an issue with the road, we've already gone through the process by hiring a surveyor, paying money. Now, we've hired an attorney who I feel it's the attorney's job that we're paying her for to go through the resolution process. And for you to ask twenty-five families to get together and basically have a pow-wow to try to solve differences, that seems kind of counterproductive
I'm sorry.
To what we're hiring an attorney for.
I'm sorry, that wasn't my intention at all.
Okay, well, that's how I kind of am understanding it.
It's perfectly okay if these twenty-five families hire what might be called a representative. And that representative represents them. That's fine with me. I'm not prescribing anything about how this gets resolved. But, um, tonight, the board will probably take a vote and, and that ticks the clock one more increment and moves it or stops it from running or moves it to the next square. And so, progress has to be made in a, in a reasonable, at a reasonable pace. Or, um, you'll have to take a third trip around the track because you, this is your second one. You did this last year. You probably did it years before that that I don't even know about. So, I can only encourage. I can't, I can't define.
We have, um, assured Sharon and Ed that, that we are more than happy to move that road line wherever they'd like it to be and it would not cost them one dime to do it. They just need to say, where would you like the line to go? And we will make that happen. They have been assured that more than once.
That's a offer that has to
So, I'm just letting you know.
Reflect off me and zoom over to there.
Yep.
Um, we're not gonna be moving any lines. So, that's not our job. These are, these are surveyor's job. Anybody else in the room wanna contribute something? Otherwise, we can, uh, ask the two people that are on pause if they wanna come back and release the pause button and go back to play. Or do you want the board to, uh, enter its deliberative phase and go towards the vote? Up to you.
Can I take one second to look at my notes?
Please.
Do I sound like a trial lawyer?
That's what they always say. That's what they always say when they want a minute to, to, you know, let the surprise witness come in, right?
Drum roll.
Yeah. No, the only last point I would make is, um, and sort of in, in, along the same lines is what, if I may, Sharon and Ed brought up of the ownership in the road. Um, we don't know who else may own to the center of the road or where, where all that may end up. Um, they did a, a title search for their own reasons, not last week or not because of this plan. They happened to have it. They did it for their own purposes and they were kind enough to share that with us. They're not required to share that with us. Um, they did. They did have the, their plan that was, their survey plan's recorded in the registry. So, obviously, you can find that, which is also helpful in one of several plans that we have. Um, but the, um, serious in-depth title work that I think was, uh, mentioned last week is, is going to be done and has to be done, um, before, um, this process can be completed. That will be done during what I'm calling the acquisition phase if this is approved by town meeting. Um, because, um, the selectmen agreed not to insist on the titles being done ahead of time due to the incredible cost. It, it really wouldn't make sense for these people to invest that on top of everything else if this was not gonna successfully go through the process. Where there is a post-town meeting vote process that has to take place and there's timeline on that as well. And that will be done at that time. So, I did wanna just comment on that and assure the people who asked the question about the titles.
Is the post-annual town meeting vote part of the process? Um, the easement resolution?
That's when all that will be done.
And, and who absorbs that cost?
The residents. That's why
The residents will absorb that?
That they, the petitioners will absorb that cost. That is why the selectmen a, agreed to their request that it not all be done ahead of time.
Oh, that's significant. Now, I'll sweep my right arm. You got any comments, Kendall and Bill?
Um, no, I'm very pleased with what I've seen and heard. I think you people have done a great job. And I vote and reflect that.
Maybe I'm talking out of line here, folks, but, uh, what have you folks encouraged for cost over the years through this whole process? Between plowing out of your own pockets
What did you talk, ten years, twenty years? I mean, this has been going on a lot.
It started in eighty-six.
Well, it's inefficient, right? Because we're all doing it
And I'm just saying
Decentralized way, so it's a lot.
You've paid a lot out of your pockets. I was just, I'd like to throw it out there for the public to hear. So, they don't think it's just one little thing that's been going on. What have you paid out of your pockets for all of this?
Well, just to one point, the last time we got a quote to have the road graded up to the town standards was twenty thousand dollars was gonna be the cost.
I'm just saying
That's not the question.
No, I know, that's the question, but
No, but what have you paid out of your pocket? I know you've paid for a lot of stuff because I, I, I've been here a long time too. Just roundabout, what do you think the cost is?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Let me turn my back.
Yeah, no problem. Scott Chance is from thirty-five Street Road. For a number of years, uh, the residents of Street Road, the residents of Street Road, um, put in my funds to help add, add soil and add rocks to, in, to the road. And, um, it was about four hundred dollars a year, um, per resident. And it was voluntary, so it may not have been every resident that contributed. But on a yearly basis, I was, I was paying about four hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Over your regular tax base?
Yes.
Well, yeah, the regular tax base dwarfs.
Eric?
Correct.
Then we would shovel that rock.
By hand, by hand.
Individually. And to the whole But that's, yeah, but that's because in our inefficient way, we all have to pay, uh, contractor many times what the town would get the stone for if we needed it. We haven't needed stone a ton of times, but when we need it and then like paying different people to do, like, it's just so much more expensive on the aggregate than for the town to use their equipment and do it. So, we compare what the town was efficiently doing to what we're so inefficiently doing. I mean, Eric and I, at number twenty-nine, spent, um,
Well, my name is
Six hundred dollars just this last time on gravel.
Yeah, prior to the October first, um, deadline of us getting the road up to par so the town to be able to plow it for us. Um, we spent approximately five hundred dollars for the October first. And then after the last rainstorm, we spent another five hundred dollars on gravel.
But we're in a problematic spot on the hill. So, we all, I feel like we are kind of around, there's a few of us that are in really bad spots. I don't even drive. We don't even drive on the section that we have to maintain.
Residents of the road because we don't take a road right out of our driveway. So, I, we don't even drive that portion of the road, but we recognize in trying to be neighborly and family oriented that we wanna try and make the road passable and safe for everybody that we can do so. But it does come, come at the cost.
So, the last time we actually hired a contractor and we weren't just doing it individually, we paid sixty-four hundred dollars for one time. And then from there, the quotes went to eleven thousand and twenty thousand dollars.
Just showing them the backs, been raising your hand.
Sorry.
Please.
No, it's okay. Peter Russell, I'm re, I live at twenty Street Road, but I'm also the president of the Lovell Pond Sporting Club, which is an abutter of Streeter Road. We own, uh, about a thousand feet of, of linear frontage there. The Lovell Pond Sporting Club budgets and spends a thousand dollars a year and contributes to the rest of the abutters here to maintain Streeter Road. So, that's a, a, a pretty, uh, consistent number for at least the last ten years that we've been contributing as a Lovell Pond. In addition to that, my wife and I, as everyone else, contribute our five or six hundred dollars to, uh, to buy gravel and to pay for work. And, you know, without, um, looking for any credit for it, there are not only myself who own equipment, but other people in this room that own equipment, that invest our own time and our own fuel and our own, um, you know, wear and tear on our equipment to grade the road. That saves a lot of money as well. But, um, if you, if you translate our time, our personal time of other people, I think it's easily that everyone in this room is spending a thousand dollars a year per family or about twenty-five thousand dollars a year is what we're collectively contributing to maintain Streeter Road. When, as Debbie and other people in the room have said, the town can do this for about twenty-five hundred dollars a year and grade it with, with, with big equipment, um, and do it in a safe and, 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 and in a way that's, that's engineered. We don't really know what we're doing. We're doing the best we can, but I'm not a road engineer. I don't know how to really put a crown on the road and create drainage. The quagmires upon us, uh, with the, with the frost coming out. So, yeah, there's some work that can be done professionally by the town, uh, by, by putting a little crown and, and creating the ditches on the road a little bit better. Hope that helps answer the question.
Talking about money and we're dwelling on the costs of things and that's common. But the numbers I'm hearing are really quite small compared to the hundred-plus thousand dollars a year in real estate taxes, uh, ten years, that's a million bucks. The, um, Bill, you, you were on the assessors, aren't you? These people all get a discount on their taxes because they're not
No, they don't.
No? No discount?
No, I didn't give them one.
So, you're paying the full freight. Okay, just wanted to, to, to hear that. Any other discussion?
Almost finished, I thank you.
Part of the board?
Uh, just some thoughts, as I know that this road was shown on the county map for Worcester County for eighteen ninety-eight. So, it's been around for a long time.
You found that?
Yes, it's labeled as a cart path, but there were other cart paths, which are now public ways, also shown on the eighteen ninety-eight also shown on the 1898 map. So, and it is the only through road. That struck me, the only private road that is a through road. So I'm sympathetic with that. I also think that you guys, in addition to paying for all the materials to fix it or paying your share of our graders, dumpsters, dump trucks, the materi, the gravel. What I came, and I do think there's a safety issue. I've driven the street. I think it badly needs a guard rail by the pond if it was icy and some other upgrades. But I think that you're, the fact that you're not looking to have it paved and town absorb this enormous cost, but just sort of bring it into paro and have it serviced like the other towns, and maybe eventually it'll get paved, sort of in its, its turn in line, it, it was pretty persuasive to me. And also the fact that by approving this plan, we are not, um-
Time out. We're not approving the plan.
Well, if, if we do, yeah, recommend the plan, whatever the proper wording is.
We recommend certain things back to the board.
We recommend this, the way this.
You're, we're not, we're not creating any additional rights that, in terms of right-of-way's or, you know, that, that that's all subject to future work, right? We're just trying to repair what the travel portion is while the rest of it gets resolved through the title examiners and deeds of gifts and so on. So, and then the other thing I just want to point out is I do think in addition to the motion to waive the acceptance, section 2 of the general bylaws, we need a motion to waive-
2.1.
Uh, 2.29 of the Town of Hubbardson zoning bylaws, which defines what can constitute a street in this town and has some of the same. It's basically that, that, you know, the street must be of sufficient width. It's the same kind of thing that appears on those plans, the A and R plans. So those are my points.
I think, um, we probably are best dealing with the two kinds of laws separately. The, the general bylaw, paragraph 2.1, and the zoning bylaw, uh, par, uh, section 2.29 in the definitions section where it defines the street. So we'll have two motions there, one on general, one on zoning. And then I think it's, uh, appropriate that we, as a board, uh, make a motion, a very simple, one-sentence motion, to provide a report that is due to the selectmen. So there'll be, I think the structure is three motions. Just so that people don't go away and say, what happened here?
Then he's got his hand up too tight.
Well, let me finish my one sentence, please.
I thought you were done.
Ben? No, you get special rank because of your age.
Wow.
What's up there?
Youth must be served. I don't have a dog in this fight because I don't live on Street Road. But as everyone knows, as the chairman of the planning board last year when this was first brought to our attention with the request to waive the requirements, my motivation as then as now was the fact that I do believe this serves the public as a whole in our town very well. I think what we need to understand, and please understand in my position, that nobody is more of a proponent for the small-town values that we have and keeping it small and, and not developing it very much, uh, as I have. But we need to focus on the infrastructure of this town. And I applaud the residents who want to improve their roads by bringing it to a public way. Because in the sense that, uh, the town insists that we need more revenue, it fits because then we will have chapter 90 money to use and appropriate instead of just wasting private money on dirt. We would have the opportunity to say that this is a public way, use the funds that we are paying taxes on appropriately, and also capitalize on the value of the real estate that is on that road. It's a very nice section of Hubbardston. The real estate values certainly command a high real estate assessment and therefore the, the values are high. And, and as a realtor, I can only say that there's nothing wrong with improving the internal parts of our town, keeping it nice, keeping it looking good, and working together to help it stay that way. So, you know, I believe in this waiver and I, and I encourage the board to grant the waiver and, uh, move on so that the select board in their wisdom will lay this out and will provide the funding for this in spite of the fact that the residents are very generously offering it. But I think it's a, it's a responsibility of the town. And I encourage the, the upgrade in infrastructure that we are hopefully going to have improved throughout Hubbardston.
Okay, thank you.
Also?
I was saying something and I got-
I'm sorry. I thought you were done.
Well, I might be done.
What happened here? What happened?
Yeah, um, my, I, I want to express my personal position as opposed to the, uh, well, not as opposed, but in, in conjunction with working as part of the board. I think it's really important that the, um, the efforts of this group, all of this group, everybody that's been working on this, uh, should go and be recognized by the town as, as pushing the town in a positive direction. And, uh, tonight, what I've tried to do and what we as a board try to do is go through the process, make sure the process was respected and adhered to. And then personally, I would like to see this make its way through the various process steps and get it before the town meeting. That's my, my goal. I think, um, the town needs to speak to this issue. End of sentence.
The last thing I'd like to say, folks, uh, as a few of us here, I've been here a long time and I've been on a lot, on a lot of boards. And my experience with Street Road, as it started to grow, when Mr. and Mrs. Streeter were upset that all the property was starting to sell, they went and they went to land court and legally made this a private road. And it's unfortunate that the town allowed, oh, before zoning, so you could build a home without a town-approved road on a, on a private road. But over the years, it's, it's gone away from that and you folks have been really incurred the cost out of your own pockets to pay for all the mistakes that have happened along the years with some of the boards, I think. And I think it's, I think it's us being on the planning board and taking, we're all in this, it's a Town of Hubbardston, so we're all residents. We're all taxpayers. I think we should all get the same benefits. And I don't think it's fair that people don't.
Uh, well, it's 10 after 8. Are we ready?
I'd like to make a motion, sir.
Oh, okay, I-
Is that okay?
Let's, uh-
Want to use my wording?
Yeah, we have some, we have a couple of different candidate motions.
We have three, you said?
Well, we have three motions to make. Let's deal with the, uh, general bylaws. That's 2.1.
Right.
It's the one you had in your hand.
This is 2.1.
Okay.
See if you can follow along. This-
I move that the planning board recommend to town meeting that the three conditions, actually it should be to the select board, correct?
No, it's a town meeting.
To the town meeting, that the three conditions contained in the Hubbardston general bylaws, section 2.1, conditions of acceptance be waived so that the Street Road can be accepted by town meeting as a public way as presented on the plan entitled, "Layout Plan of Street Road, Hubbardston, Mass., November 30th, 2018, Prepared by ZOK Surveyors." Should we add to that? We don't need to add anything. I can make sure all the easements get taken care of. We're just approving, correct?
Wait, let's, let's, uh, can I consider an alternative?
Sure.
Sure.
There's a, a phrasing of the motion that incorporates the state law and whatnot.
Okay.
Uh, having considered the petition to lay out Street Road and recognize that the petition is made up of the petition and the plan, that's, they're attached, they're stated. So, right, having considered the petition to lay out Street Road as a public way referred to us by the select board, uh, we move that the planning board, or I move that the planning board vote under chapter 41, sections 81G and 81I to report that Street Road should be laid out as a public way and that conditions set forth in section 2.1 of the town's general bylaws are hereby waived for Street Road. Now that's just the, the general bylaws piece. What that does is it ropes in the petition, the attached plans, and the fact that we are reporting to report to the select, okay?
I agree.
So words look pretty good. Words are tough sometimes, but, um, that's the first motion, the general bylaws motion. Just as a preview, to do the zoning bylaws, we say almost the exact same thing or we say zoning bylaws, section 2.28. And then for the, um, uh, report, I move that we send a letter report to the, uh, select board stating the planning board has acted per our March 15th, 2019 meeting and recommend that the select board lay out Street Road for acceptance by the town as a public way. And, and that deliberately does not repeat the motions. It just says you want to see the motions, go to the meeting, and, and then we're not crossing ourselves.
Okay.
So that, that's offered for consideration as well.
So you want to take the friendly amendment to your motion?
Yes, I'll take the friendly amendment.
Because he moved, so.
You moved first, so I have to move now?
No, so he accepts your friendly amendment, so it's moved as you read it.
Let's deal with just the first one, the general bylaws one. I offer that as a friendly amendment.
I need a second.
Second.
What did I just do?
We're voting on the first one.
Okay.
We're voting on the amendment, accepting the amendment. No, it's friendly. He doesn't have to-
There's no vote, but I just need to vote on the motion.
Correct, the first, first one.
I believe the mover just accepts it.
Correct, correct. So now we vote on it.
So I second the motion as amended.
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
So may I ask a question? Um, so you just voted to accept an incorrect plan, ZOK plan? Is that the understanding I have?
My, my understanding is that this plan is not final. It can change. It carries-
That wasn't the, that doesn't, that didn't seem like the language that you said on the vote. You just said you were going to accept that plan, not with alterations or anything, or corrections.
Um, we did not say accept the plan. Let me read it again. Having considered the petition to lay out Street Road as a public way referred to by us, referred to us by the board of selectmen, I move that the planning board vote under chapter 41, sections 81G and 81I to report, that's what we have to do. We have to report to the selectmen. So to report that Street Road should be laid out as a public way and that the conditions set forth in section 2.1 of the town's general bylaws are hereby waived for Street Road. So we're reporting to the select board that section 2.1 has been waived. That means it doesn't have to be so wide and so thick and all those things that section 2.1 says.
Section 2.1. 2.1.
That is, um, actually I should add, I should add, um, no, section 2.1 of the general bylaws. That's fine.
Chapter 16, hold.
It's chapter 18.
Yeah, it's chapter XVII. Yeah, I need, I need to add the set forth in chapter XVII comma, section 2.1. Will that be accepted as a friendly amendment?
Sure, yes, sir.
Sure.
Second, you have to vote on that?
Aye.
We voted to accept that as a friendly amendment. So, um, we're doing the same thing we did last, last year. We're, we're waiving section 2.1 from the construction requirements of the road. And this, this plan right now is a reference plan. We recognize that it can be revised. Okay? So, next motion. We're going to do the same thing, only with the zoning bylaw. Having considered the petition to lay out Street Road as a public way referred to us by the board of selectmen, I move that the planning board vote under chapter 41, sections 81G and 81I, excuse me, 81I, to report that Street Road should be laid out as a public way and that conditions set forth in- I don't have the chapter.
Section 2.29, definition of street?
Yeah, but what is the, what is the?
Article 2.
Article 2, yeah, article 2, definitions. So we, we add article 2, section 2.29, quote, "street," unquote, of Town of Hubbardston zoning bylaws are hereby waived for Street Road.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we'll try a third one. We move that we send a letter report. If you would write such a letter report, I'll come over and sign it because we only got about a week left. I move that we send a letter report to the select board stating the planning board has acted per our meeting of March 13th, 2019 and recommend that the select board lay out Street Road for acceptance by the town as a public way.
I make that motion?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So there's a motion to waive, a motion to waive, and a motion to report. Is that, got the waterfront covered?
Yes, sir.
Belief style.
And, um, we're really doing the same thing we did last year, but we're maybe doing it with a little more exactitude. And I, I hope very much that you people can all put your heads together however you choose to put your heads together and, uh, come to a resolution. It doesn't seem insurmountable. I hope it all works out.
And we thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, everybody.
Thank you for your participation in democracy.
In its most pure form.
I need a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion. I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's not plug these micro-